Yes, trustee?
What?
Report.
Report on public.
No, report. Yes, trustee.
Yes. Report.
On a motion by trustee Gonzalez Ewen and seconded by President Quinlan, the board voted seven to zero to reject tort claim twenty-five, twenty-six dash zero-two. Trustee Delphine Polk, yes. Trustee Gonzalez Ewen, yes. Trustee Whitrow, yes. Trustee Johannes, yes. Trustee Bella Reese, yes. Vice President Gonzalez Brito, yes. President Quinlan, yes.
That's the conclusion of the report?
Yes, Board President.
Thank you. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance? Can we have roll call, please?
Student trustee Malik?
Yes.
Student trustee Migliaccio?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewen? Trustee Napoleon Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Here.
Trustee Quinlan?
Here.
You have a call.
I have asked trustee Delphine Polk to read our affirmation of the statement of cooperation.
Thank you, President Quinlan. The Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees is committed to our effectiveness as a board. Through an annual self-evaluation and the establishment of meaningful goals, we dedicate ourselves to functioning as a high-performing team on behalf of the people we represent in helping students reach their educational goals. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. The full statement of cooperation is attached to this agenda item, but in summary, we commit to: build trust and seek to understand each other, be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols, model the behavior we want others to exhibit.
Thank you, trustee. Report of action taken in closed session. Okay. Chancellor's correction. Before we approve the agenda, chancellor, I know you wanted to make a comment.
Thank you so much, Board President Quinlan. Good evening, trustees. I want to let you know about a clerical error in the published agenda item regarding the iPark contract for the cloud-hosted parking permit management platform presented at the August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five board meeting. The agenda item incorrectly stated the contract total as one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred for a three-year term. The correct total for the three-year term is actually eighty-eight thousand and fifty dollars, as accurately reflected in the contract provided to the board. The miscalculation occurred only in the agenda item. So we apologize for any confusion this may have caused and wanted to make sure to publicly correct the record tonight.
Thank you. Correction in the right direction. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Whitrow then made the motion and trustee Gonzalez Brito made the second. Call the question?
Student trustee Malik?
Yes.
Student trustee Migliaccio?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewen?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can I get a motion for approval of the minutes?
Second.
A motion was made by trustee Whitrow and the second was by trustee Reese. Call the question?
Student trustee Malik?
Yes.
Student trustee Migliaccio?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewen?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Associated student government reports.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Omaa Marissa and I have the honor of serving as the Associated Student Body President at Berkeley City College. For my report today, I am pleased to share several important updates from ASBCC. I would like to start by highlighting our recent progress in student governance. This semester, we have made strong progress in strengthening our student representation. We have successfully completed our ASBCC committee appointments, ensuring that every member of our board, including the executive officers, senators, and justices, have been assigned to serve on shared governance and district-wide committees. This ensures that BCC students are actively represented in decision-making process, both at the college and district level. In addition, we are proud to share that for the first time in two years, Berkeley City College now has a delegate to the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, also known as SSC. This marks an important step forward in ensuring that our student body has a strong voice at the statewide level, and we are excited about the opportunities that creates for greater advocacy and collaboration on behalf of BCC students. Alongside this, ASBCC has been persistently supporting student involvement through club development. I'm proud to announce that BCC now has thirty-five active clubs that have been successfully chartered, which is a clear reflection of our student creativity, leadership, and enthusiasm for club involvement. To continue building this momentum, we are excited to announce that our Fall Club Rush is taking place this Thursday, October sixteenth, in the atrium during college hours. Out of the thirty-five clubs that we have, thirty of them will be tabling to share their missions, goals, and upcoming activities with the student body. This event is a wonderful opportunity to strengthen community engagement, help students explore their interests, and promote the many resources available on campus. ASBCC will also be tabling and using this opportunity to connect with students to share who we are, what we do, and how they can get involved in student government. Moving forward, ASBCC has set several important goals that we recently discussed with our president, Dr. Richardson. One of our main priorities is advocating for international students by exploring ways to increase on-campus job opportunities and proposing the creation of an International Student Office at BCC to improve access to essential information and resources. We are also developing initiatives to boost student enrollment through peer mentorship programs, outreach to local high schools, and student panels that highlight the support system and opportunities available at BCC. Our entire BCC team remains committed to bringing these goals into action and continuing to present and advocate for our students. Thank you so much, everyone, for your time and attention. That concludes my report for today.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Owen Flaherty from the Associated Students of Laney College. I'm just going to start by talking a little bit about the clubs. I'm proud to announce that the Associated Students of Laney College have now chartered fifteen clubs, and we will be holding our annual Club Rush on October twenty-second from twelve to two. We are expecting to have all fifteen clubs present and ready to include new members in their membership. We have also updated the ASLC page on our website, making the information more accessible to all students. And along with these changes, we incorporated some new aspects to the club pages and to the pages regarding student communities to make that information a little more intelligible so that students are actually able to access information. Initially, we've noticed in the past that there's a lot of students that are interested in clubs, but the website wasn't necessarily clear about how to join a club, how to start a club, and it made it difficult for students to get involved. So we're really trying to bridge that gap so that students can get what they want. I would like to conclude just by thanking Ion and Leo for setting up the ASG mixer. I had an amazing opportunity, along with other members of the ASLC, to get to know the other members, including Omaa Ma, of the other Associated Student Governments in Peralta, and it was a great opportunity. Thank to you, to the both of you. Thank you to all the trustees. Have a great night.
Thank you. Is that it for student reports? Okay. Peralta Classified Senate report.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Gilkerson, and Administrative Leadership. The board report for the Peralta Classified Senate is as follows. The first report is coming from Berkeley City College. On Thursday, September twenty-fifth, Berkeley City College Classified Professionals attended a financial wellness workshop led by Patelco Credit Union. The session covered key strategies for creating and maintaining financial stability, including budgeting using the fifty-thirty-twenty rule, value-based spending and savings techniques such as automated transfers and roundup programs. Participants also learned about credit building and management, understanding how credit scores are calculated, the differences between hard and soft credit pools, and methods for paying down debt responsibly. On Flex Day, the Ad-Hoc Professional Development Committee of the Classified Senate has organized two workshops. Planning for Your Future CalPERS Pension Overview, with representatives of CalPERS presenting and taking questions about how CalPERS pension works, including contributions, retirement formulas, and benefits that support your long-term financial security. In the afternoon session, Dr. Amy Chang and BCC's Annie Liu will present From Uncertainty to Opportunity: Navigating Change with Purpose, a workshop for classified professionals to learn how to confidently navigate upcoming district-wide changes, transform uncertainties into opportunities for leadership, and align our daily work with our core values. The next report is College of Alameda. Under the leadership of our president, President Dixon, some of our colleagues, including COA Classified Senate President Angela Kimball, were able to join the recent City of Alameda Economic Forecast, as well as the annual golf fundraising tournament held by the Peralta Colleges Foundation. Although the exposure, as well as the experience attending these events, doesn't always allow for a classified to stay informed, it helps with broadening our perspective that may help us not only with our personal ambitions, but also with how we think and operate in different spaces. Through the leadership of President Dixon and VPs, COA will be celebrating our Classified Appreciation Day on Wednesday, October the fifteenth, to celebrate all of the hard work that our classified professionals do. We are excited to acknowledge COA classified professionals for their continuous efforts and work towards student success. Laney College is next. Laney College Classified Senate held its first meeting of the semester on Tuesday, September twenty-third, with the following topics discussed. Campus safety and preventative measures to ensure we are safe in our areas. Panic buttons were issued to staff. We are checking in to make sure everyone has the Peralta Safety App on their phones. The return of safety aids to the campus since the pandemic will provide additional eyes and ears throughout the campus and will be overseen by the Laney Business Office and Facilities Project Coordinator. Lastly, the planning of this year's Laney Children's Center Halloween Festival is officially underway. We are excited to continue this cherished tradition and would love your help in making it truly unforgettable for our children. If you have any questions, please contact Hope Lane or Canetta Barnett. The event will be held on Friday, October the thirty-first, from ten-thirty a.m. to twelve-thirty p.m. The location is to be determined. The next report is the District Service Center. DSC Senate met on October the eighth and discussed initiatives to improve and promote the visibility of the District Service Center Classified Professionals through encouraging collective efforts such as increasing social engagement between the DSC and our sister campuses to foster engagement with students and with classified professional colleagues. Some of the initiatives discussed are establishing fundraising activities to create and issue student scholarships and provide an additional funding source to promote, enhance, and establish self-sufficiency for classified professional development, supporting the efforts of our campus Basic Need Centers for students through establishing things such as coat and school supply drives to ensure students keep warm during the winter and are prepared to return to school with the school supplies needed to be successful for the upcoming spring twenty-twenty-six semester. Improvement of communication guidelines and the promotion of knowledge sharing with the consideration to recommend preferred apps such as Obsidian to store and share general information and resources that will benefit classified by establishing a centralized, yes, a centralized informational resource center and training hub while preserving the integrity of institutional knowledge in case real change and real-time changes occur, such as procedural updates and processes, standard operating procedures and the like, and will enable classified professionals to perform their duties effectively with additional support even as change occurs in real time. Creating micro-learning sessions to teach classified professionals how to maximize usage of the existing Microsoft apps we currently access, we currently access, such as SharePoint Teams, Project Planner, Sway, and other job-specific functions such as general budget overview and requisition training, and others as identified. This will provide classified with the opportunity to learn from other seasoned classified professionals and allow those that facilitate such sessions to expand their career portfolio as an experienced facilitator, professional development practitioner, and trainer. Finally, the DSC Classified Senate has approved its official DSC Classified Professionals logo and is working to establish a website for the Senate. We would like to thank Marcus Krill for spearheading efforts to establish our webpage and will announce its official grand opening upon completion. Our final report comes from the Peralta Classified Senate as a whole. The Peralta Classified Senate would like to express appreciation and gratitude to all classified professionals that have stepped up to serve and represent classified on various committees. Whether a shared governance committee, hiring committee, task force, or ad hoc and standing committees, we acknowledge and appreciate your efforts, commitment, and support of the Peralta Classified Senate and classified constituency body. Next, we are pleased and excited to announce that the PCS has voted and approved our official Peralta Classified Senate logo, which includes branding colors that represent all campuses and the district site and is reflective to who we are as Peralta Classified Professionals. Finally, the PCS will be holding its first fundraiser for the academic year through Double Good Popcorn. The fundraiser will be held from November the third through the seventh. Proceeds from the fundraiser will help support PCS's student scholarship and classified professional development initiatives. We ask for your support to make our fundraiser successful as we strive to support and reward student success through scholarships and enhanced classified professional development for all classified. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. We have a District Academic Senate report.
Hey, thank you, Board President Quinlan, members of the board, Madam Chancellor, and assembled administrators. I'm Tom Renbarger. I'm the Vice President of the District Academic Senate, and I'm filling in for DAS president Leslie Blakely, who is on an accreditation site visit team to Carrington College. And I'm going to be reading some notes from some texts that we exchanged, so that's why I'm looking down at my phone here. So first off, the shared governance meetings are underway at the district level as well as college levels. District committees are thinking through the inquiry questions for the focus of their committees and to determine what data they will need to ask for. Some of the committees that are currently reporting to DAS have actually reconsidered their place in the shared governance structure. So for example, the District Distance Education Committee has voted to become part of the District Technology Committee, and the District CE Committee has voted to become part of the Student Service and Enrollment Management Committee. Conversely, the CIPD, the district-level Curriculum Committee, has actually voted to become part of the, part of a committee that reports to DAS. So that work is ongoing. And so in addition to the inquiry questions, we're also just thinking about the overall governance structure in the district. In our last meeting, DAS had a presentation from Natasha Sahani on the legalities of what faculty can do with regards to ICE and protecting vulnerable students. And then I also want to mention, I want to give my thanks to Vice Chancellor Nelson, who I believe is coming to the October sixteenth MCAS meeting to give a presentation on the economics of, of the reunification. And if you'll indulge me for a moment, the objections that, the economic objections that have come up, I would liken to, I want to give you an example from physics about the solution to the hydrogen atom. You say how fast the electron is moving, and then the two charged particles in separation give you the total energy for the electron. It's a hard problem to solve. You get a differential equation in three dimensions. But you can do this thing where you can put all the stuff that's related to the separation of the two charged particles on one side of the equation, and then all the stuff that has to do with the direction of the electron from the proton on the other side of the equation. And this technique is called separation of variables. Separation of variables is important in this context because the objections that I've gotten, that I've heard, seem to revolve around, well, okay, these things will get us more money or will save us money, and then, but the merger will cost us in terms of apportionment, in terms of going from two small colleges to one medium-sized college and one center. So the, the thing that I think people don't understand is what's not separable from the merger that provides savings or increased revenue. So it's a little bit of a left-field comparison, but a lot of the kind of, a lot of the people who are making these objections at Merritt College at least are math and science faculty, and I think they sort of have that mindset in their heads. And so we kind of need the breakdown of, like, what can't be saved or earned unless we also merge, which is going to cost us money. So I think with that, I will conclude the report. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Item three point eleven. We'll now move to public comments. Please remember this portion of public comments is only for items that are not on the agenda. If you have a comment on a public hearing item, please wait for the item to be called to make your comment. Thank you.
We have Jeb Sensory?
It's on. Yep, okay. Hello, Board, Chancellor, sorted administrators, the citizen. Hello, everybody. I want to say hello and just actually just reflect upon what, you know, we're seeing in the news. Or if you're, you know, I got a few of you pegged as NPR people, so what you're seeing and hearing on NPR about, like, you know, that we're moving towards, or strike that, deep into an authoritarian moment, and it's a little frightening. And I want to make sure that it's known, that everybody knows that CSUs have also, have already handed over faculty and student information to the federal government, and that the UCs have pretty much done the same. And as a representative of faculty, I'd like assurances that this is not something that Peralta will ever do. That's a pretty big blanket statement for me to demand, but I feel pretty comfortable that, like, a lot of faculty are behind me and certainly students as well. As we move even deeper into fascism, I mean, we're already, we're already there. I mean, you don't have to look far. And the masked men have an even larger presence in our communities. Faculty should get assurances from the administration that faculty, that we will have the flexibility to teach and, teach and for our students, and for our students to learn in a context and space where they are safe from the state section violence that is closing in on Oakland, Berkeley, and the surrounding communities. I'll be honest, I'm also looking forward to, like, you know, working with the administration in any way, shape, or form, I think a lot of faculty are PFT, about an explicit plan to resist said militarization and, and I guess domination of our, of our communities. We just want our students and faculty, and really all of Peralta and our communities, to be safe. And I can't think of a better place to have this conversation, a real conversation about it, than the historical home of some of the most powerful resistance in American history. Thanks.
There are no other public comments.
Okay. Chancellor's report.
Thank you so much, Board President. Good meeting, community. So let me begin the Chancellor's report tonight, talking about our District Service Center roadshows in September tenth through eleventh. On September tenth through eleventh, the District Service Center leadership team joined me in visiting each of the colleges. It was a great experience engaging with colleagues about our strategic vision to create a unified, equity-centered district, streamlining programs, a unified equity-centered district, streamlining programs, aligning resources, and forging clear student birth pathways that remove barriers, accelerate success, and set a new standard for community college excellence. I provided more information about how our shared governance process, leveraging three new task force plus existing committees, will get us to our vision. In addition to our long-term plan, we implemented several immediate improvements. We launched monthly HR office hours at each college, introduced student success navigators for seamless peer support, and upgraded technology to improve the enrollment process. These immediate actions alongside new safety measures like the Peralta Safety App, and thank you so much for the plug on that earlier, and recent facilities updates, plus the new shuttle bus service for students that will do its soft launch on December 1st, are really designed to enhance the experience for both our students and employees as we move forward with this crucial transformation. I want to thank the college presidents and their teams for being such gracious hosts, and we wrap the roadshows with a presentation here at the District Service Center on October 10th. More information will be posted on Peralta Gems, including a link to the slides that were presented. In spring 2025, the Research and Planning Group for the California Community Colleges, the RP Group, partnered with the Cal, Community College League of California's CEO, Affordability Food and Housing Access Task Force, which I chair, to assess trends in food and student housing security among California community college students. Nearly 77,000 students from 102 colleges responded to the 2025 Real College California Survey. All four Peralta colleges participated in the survey. On September 24th, Alyssa Nguyen, Dr. Katie Brohan from the RP Group, and I hosted a webinar to present the 2025 data. The challenge with meeting student basic needs is real. Two out of three community college students in California lack a reliable access to food or housing. That's right, 2/3 of California community college students face at least one form of basic needs insecurity, specifically 46% reported being food insecure, 58% reported being housing insecure, and 20% reported experiencing homelessness. These insecurities directly impact academic success. Students facing basic needs insecurity are significantly more likely to earn non-passing grades than their food and housing secure peers. Addressing these challenges requires a multi-pronged approach, which includes implementing targeted and culturally responsive interventions for vulnerable populations, improving the accessibility, visibility, and usability of campus and public assistance programs, and advancing systemic policy changes that address root causes such as housing affordability and living wages. The report was covered the following day by the National Publication Inside Higher Education and other outlets. Armed with the new data, we'll be working closely with the college presidents and our amazing basic needs coordinators as we continue to do all we can to help students, make sure students have food and housing necessary for their success. I do want to add that our upcoming Board Study Session will also feature a deeper dive into the specific data for the Peralta colleges in terms of what our students said, so looking forward to that presentation. On Tuesday, September 30th, the College of Alameda President Melanie Dixon and her team hosted a ribbon cutting celebrating the grand opening of the new Transportation Technology Center. What a glorious day it was. The Transportation Technology Center represents a $36 million investment made possible by the taxpayers of our service area through the Measure G bond as well as state funds that also help support the effort. The state-of-the-art facility consolidates College of Alameda's automotive technology, auto body and paint, and diesel mechanics programs, and serves as a launchpad that will equip students with the necessary skills for meaningful, high-wage careers in the Bay Area. My thanks to everyone who helped make it happen, from JK Architects to Roblin Project Management, Alton Construction, and faculty like Rick Breen's Plan, Blair Morton, and many others who helped inform the design, and to the taxpayers who funded it, this was a true community effort. I'm also grateful to Board President Quinlan, Trustee Withrow, and Gonzalez Brito, and Student Trustees Malik and Miliacchio for their attendance and support. Speaking of student trustees, kudos to Ayan Malik and Leo Miliacchio, who demonstrated their leadership by organizing a mixer for the Associated Student Government Leaders from Berkeley City College, College of Alameda, Laney College, and Merritt College. The mixer took place at Merritt College on Monday, October 6th, and included 30 students participating from the colleges. Trustee Nikki Gonzalez-Un and I both had the honor of addressing the group before the student trustees took over for an exhilarating conversation on the importance of student voices and student, in shared governance, and how to increase student participation in government at the college level, but also in local, state, and national government. This was a terrific meeting, and I'm looking forward to following up on some of the many excellent ideas that were discussed. My thanks to the student trustees for organizing a terrific program, frankly. I also want to thank Merritt College President Dr. David M. Johnson for providing the stays, and Ms. Tashada Henry from my office who helped arrange the food and coordination. On Wednesday, October 8th, the boardroom was a busy place. Both the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee and our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee had meetings that day. It's a great day to see how important these committees are for citizen oversight of Peralta spending, both functioning really well. My thanks to the college presidents for attending the Parcel Tax Meeting and sharing their spending hands for the Parcel Tax for this academic year. I know that committee members including Robert Schoeffner, William Higgins, Mayoshi Broadnecks, Irene Kish, Tammy Lee, Doug Lindsay, and Thomas Mulville-Hill appreciated your participation and input. You heard from Board Committee Chair Jeff Canberra at the September 9th Board Meeting when he provided the Oversight Annual Report affirming that the district is spending bond funds appropriately. It was great to see them now working on their next annual report with construction project updates from Greg Nelson and Amy Marshall. Other members of the bond committee include Joby Thomas, Mark McComb, Terrell Gamble, and Benjamin Scott. My gratitude to all the members of these important oversight bodies. Last Friday night at halftime of the Laney College Football Game, as part of Laney's Alumni Night festivities, we had the world premiere of the First Chance: Best Chance You. In 2020, Laney College Football was featured in season five of the acclaimed Netflix series Last Chance You. It was incredible show with some masterful storytelling about Laney and our students and Oakland itself. First Chance: Best Chance You is a look back at the experiences five years later and an opportunity to catch up with the student athletes and reflect. It was a thrill to watch it on the jumbotron, and I want to thank President Absada. It was great to be alongside her, and our president colleague of Foothill College was in attendance because we were playing the Owls, and CEO Nelson was also there. My thanks to Athletic Director John Beam, Head Coach Joshua Ramos, current team members, and particularly the former players, Dior Scott, Nu Tagave, who's now a coach, and Nishan Wright for participating in the documentary. The video was produced and directed by Joe Sullivan and Mark Johnson from our marketing department, and was brilliantly edited by Joe. He took all of my edits and was really lovely about it all. It's now available on Peralta's YouTube channel and coming soon for a broadcast on our cable TV station, which is Comcast Channel 27 or 28, depending upon where you live in our service area. And that concludes my Chancellor's report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 4.1, Public Hearing. Sunshining of Contract Reopeners for Negotiations from the Peralta Federation of Teachers. This being the time and date noticed, the Board of Trustees will now convene a public hearing to receive public comment regarding the sunshining of contract reopeners for negotiations from the Peralta Federation of Teachers. Have we received a request for anyone to speak, or is there anyone present who wishes to comment regarding this topic?
No, Board President.
Okay, no requests to speak have been received. If there are no more comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. Item 5.1, Approval of All Consent Items. Can I get a motion to approve the consent items?
Second.
I'm not sure who made the motion. Trustee Withrow made the motion. Trustee Gonzalez-Un seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Malik?
Yes.
Student trustee Miliacchio?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Un?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellariz?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Action items. Second reading and approval of board policies.
Move approval of item 11.1.
Second.
Chancellor, you had comments first? No, okay. Trustee Gonzalez-Un made the motion, and Trustee Delphine Pope seconded the motion. Call the roll, please.
Student trustee Malik?
Yes.
Student trustee Miliacchio?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Un?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellariz?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
11.2, Consider Adoption of Resolution Number 25/26-195, Authorizing Submission of the Annual Facilities Five-Year Capital Outlay Construction Plan for Fiscal Years 2027 through 2031 to the State Chancellor's Office.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion was made by Chancellor, sorry, Trustee Gonzalez-Un. Gave you a promotion there, Nikki. Second was made by Trustee Withrow. Any discussion? Call the questions.
Student trustee Malik?
Yes.
Student trustee Miliacchio?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Un?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellariz?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So items 11.3 through 11.6, Vice President Gonzalez-Brito will do this item because I need to recuse myself for a conflict of interest.
Thank you, President Quinlan. So 11.3 is Consider Adoption of Resolution Number 25/26-185, Ratifying the Purchase of Microsoft Software License Renewals Pursuant to a Foundation for California Community Colleges College-Bye Contract in an Amount Not to Exceed $267,646.
Madam Vice President, can we move items 11.3 and 11.4 in one motion, please?
Yes.
So moved?
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, we can call the roll.
Student trustee Malik?
Yes.
Student trustee Miliacchio?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Un?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellariz?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we'll move to 11.5, District, Consider Ratification of the Payment Warrant Reports for the Period Covering July 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2025.
Madam Vice President, can we combine 11.5 and 11.6 dealing with purchase order reports in one motion?
Yes.
So move.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay.
Student trustee Malik?
Yes.
Student trustee Miliacchio?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Un?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellariz?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Just keep going. Okay. While President Quinlan makes his way, we'll go to 12.1, Board of Trustees Reports. Should we start to the left?
So hello, everybody. Just wanted to give a quick recap on Peralta's Associated Student Government Mixer, which Leo and I held last Monday. Just to go into more of the specifics, we brought together around 30 student leaders from all four of the colleges. It was held at Merritt Student Lounge, and our goal here was to connect ASG leaders and emphasize their power in shared governance. So to start off, we had guest speakers. Chancellor Gilkerson and Trustee Gonzalez-Un give past examples and personal insights on student-led initiatives. From there, the student trustees, Leo and I, gave a presentation on shared governance and ASG's specific part in connecting student voices to the board and administration. We held a Socrate Seminar for everyone attending to get involved. This Socrate Seminar had ASG leaders focused on centralized communication methods, bridging the gap between online learners and campus life, as well as planning events which advocate for basic needs and campus improvements. From there, we broke off into focus groups where ASG leaders built personalized relationships with each other across campuses, and also went more in-depth with setting actionable campus goals and stronger ties across colleges. Our next steps following this event is to compile the feedback data and support ASG leaders in advancing their campus goals.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd just like to add a couple things to that. Yes, the mixer was fantastic. Thank you very much for Merritt College for being able to host it. I was not expecting how good of a view that was. It was, it was absolutely phenomenal to see the sunset, and also, thank you very much for that. Upcoming on Saturday is going to be the Pumpkin Pursuit. Me and Aion will be in that. We hope to see many of you guys there for fundraiser and also going for gold, you know? And then also, the two of us have been working on an outreach program that we both have decided to do more Instagram videos to try and, you know, help students, hey, this is what we do. We're student trustees. If you have problems, come to us. The first video, I think, did pretty good. Actually got someone coming up to me today. They're like, oh my God, I saw your first video. So I like to say, I like to think that it's successful so far. And then on a personal third note, there's kind of an illness going around, so everyone watching and everyone in this room, please stay safe. I'm feeling something in my throat, and I hope you guys all feel, feel good, so, yeah. It's very, it's very mild, it's very mild.
I was honored to attend the Alameda County Democratic Party Central Committee Unity Dinner with Labor Partners, and President Quinlan, you were there, and Trustee Johannes as well. Some of the things I've been up to, so I am going to be a mentor for the Race Policy and Law Academy at Oakland Tech this Thursday morning, so I'll be mentoring for students. I also teach at Oakland Tech. I teach ninth grade Chicano Studies, so I'm really, I'm excited. The students, I was told today, is really, they're really excited to talk to us, so hopefully I'll be able to bring some of you guys with me, and I'll be able to report back.
I just want to congratulate the College of Alameda on the Transportation and Technology Center. What an impressive, impressive, not just the building and all the technology in it, but the students that were there already working on the cars, seeing those trucks parked in the, in the space, and hearing from faculty about, you know, the importance of that space and that investment. So thank you for welcoming me there. So happy to celebrate it and look forward to all we're going to hear about, all the amazing works that you guys are doing, coming out of there.
Okay, I would, this is my second ribbon cutting in what the past month. The first one was up at the Merritt Horticulture Center, and this one at the Alameda Transportation Center. And like the Chancellor, I would like to thank our taxpayers for their investment in our community, in our colleges, in our students, and good jobs for these, those students when they come out of these programs. One of the exciting things that I haven't actually heard to mention tonight was the fact that we are now, our Alameda Transportation Center is now the center for doing all the electric buses, which is where all of our school buses are going for in the Bay Area, which is, I think, going to be an amazing source of training opportunities and hopefully income for colleges, too. So I think kudos for that and for the job that administration did, the faculty did, and the students are definitely enjoying the new facilities. So that's it. Thank you. Okay. Do we have announcements?
Yes. So our announcements are, one, love your future. Enrollment is open for fall short-term classes that start in October. Use our new online class search tool to find the class that's right for you. Visit the Peralta website to start the application or enrollment process. Two, October 13th through 17th is Undocumented Student Success Week, a call to action that uplifts the voices, resilience, and contributions of students impacted by immigration status. There are events happening at each of our colleges. Check the college website for details, especially important nowadays. Three, the Great California Shakeout Earthquake Preparedness Trail is coming up on Thursday, October 16th at 10:00. is coming up on Thursday, October 16th at 10:16 a.m. Our emergency alert system will be sending email and text messages then to remind folks to drop cover and hold on. And finally, the Peralta Pumpkin Pursuit 5K Run Walk is this Saturday morning, October 18th at Merritt College. Thanks to our sponsors, the event is free for students and less than $45 for employees and community members, with all proceeds benefiting students via the Peralta Colleges Foundation. Visit www.peralta.edu/5k for more information.
Now we adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for coming.